I'll call the March 19th, 2018, City Council meeting to order. Call of the roll.
John Hawkins?
Here.
Matt McKinney?
Here.
Brian Miller?
Here.
Jim Talbot?
Here.
Logan Walts?
Here.
Call for motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
Call those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion approved, pledge of allegiance. Section A, this is the time of the meeting that a citizen may address the council on a matter not on the agenda. Except in cases of emergency, the city council will not take any action at this meeting, but may ask city staff to research the matter or have the matter placed on the agenda for a future meeting. Anyone have any? For us or not? No? Pretty quiet. Okay, item one is public information, we don't have any of that.
I can, I wanted to bring up farmer's market meeting, August 27th, here at 5:30?
March.
Oh, I'm sorry. (laughter) You may still have another one in August. March 27th at 5:30, so if you are a vendor that needs to get signed up or have any interests, be at that meeting.
Here, Councilmember.
Yep.
Okay. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial, routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, we consider it in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item one is minutes of March 5th and March 6th, 2018. Two is a resolution on payroll for the period ending March 3rd, 2018, and paid on March 9th, 2018. And three is a resolution on bills and the funds list. How would you like to?
We'd like to approve collectively.
Second.
Call those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion approved. Item one is a presentation by Greg Fritz, CEO of NYMECA, North Iowa Municipal Electrical Cooperative Association, on a proposal for council consideration of the 2018 CTS Combined Transmission System Improvements Agreement, which would be between the members of NYMECA on transmission ownership. Well?
Thank you. I can get started. Good afternoon, my name is Greg Fritz, I'm the CEO of NYMECA. NYMECA is North Iowa Municipal Electric Cooperative Association. Since this is my first time seeing you, I thought I'd start off a little bit too with my presentation, just to give you a little bit more background on NYMECA in case you're not familiar, and then I'll talk about the 2018 CTS improvements. Okay, I just click the bottom here to up the stance or...
You should have little arrows on there.
The arrow, okay. There we go. Okay, I'll start off just a little bit about the NYMECA organization. So NYMECA stands for North Iowa Municipal Electric Cooperative Association. We're a joint action agency, which was formed to allow municipal utilities to work jointly together to gain efficiencies and economies of scale, to be able to provide services at lower cost by working together. We were formed in November of 1965. Webster City was a charter member when we were formed. We're actually the fifth oldest joint action agency in the country out of 80-plus joint action agencies nationwide. We're headquartered in Humboldt, we have a staff of just two, we have an operating budget of about $375,000, but we manage transactions for the members that total about $35 million a year. We have 13-member utilities, which I'll show here in a second. Each member, we're governed by a 13-member board of directors, each member, each member's governing body, so in your case that would be yourself, whether it's the city council or the board of trustees in some of the communities, appoints a representative to our board, usually the general manager or electric superintendent of the utility. Adam Dickinson is your representative on our board currently. We're a full member of Corn Belt Power Cooperative, and one of our directors, our board president, Brad Hahnold from Coon Rapids, serves on the Corn Belt Board, and then we're also a Class C member of Basin Electric in Bismarck, North Dakota. Here's a map of our membership. All of our members are interconnected to the Corn Belt Transmission System. There's actually a SIIMECA, which is South Iowa Municipal Electric, they're all interconnected with SIPCO, there's YIMECA, which is interconnected with NIPCO, so there's several organizations like ours around the state of Iowa. This is just another list of our members, and you can kind of see their sizes and how many kilowatt-hours a year each does. All total, we're about 641 million kilowatt-hours in 2017 that our members sold to customers. About 24,000 meters and a population of about 43,000 people that our members serve. Webster City is our third-largest member after Spencer and Algonah, at least in terms of kilowatt-hours served. So NYMECA purchases 100% of Webster City's requirements from Corn Belt Power Cooperative, and our other 12 members participate in what we call our capacity-sharing pool, where we use their resources, generation resources, and some purchase power agreements that we have to meet their needs. So everybody else is a little bit separate from what we do for Webster City. Any questions on any of that before I start talking about the transmission piece? Okay, in 1989, NYMECA and Corn Belt signed the transmission agreement. Under this agreement, Corn Belt and the NYMECA members agreed to operate their various transmission pieces as one system, again to gain that efficiency and economies of scale. Under this agreement, this combined system is known as the Common Transmission System, or CTS, and under the agreement, Corn Belt and NYMECA agreed to share in the cost of capital improvements, O&amp;M costs, and other costs that are related to the CTS. Webster City and Algonah are not part of this agreement, just the other 11 members are. Webster City is not a member because your transmission requirements falls under your Corn Belt power supply agreement that you have, and that goes back to the late 70s actually where that was started.
(inaudible)
Under the, Algonah's not a member because they were actually not a member of NYMECA at the time this was signed, so they missed out on that opportunity. So under your existing agreement, Corn Belt is responsible for managing all of your transmission needs, so what happens is essentially your transmission requirements falls on the Corn Belt side of the NYMECA-Corn Belt Transmission Agreement. Historically, Corn Belt has done about $4 to $5 million worth of CTS improvements each year, rebuilding transmission lines, new facilities, things like that, and our share is roughly about $750,000 per year of that, and that would normally get divided up among those 11 members that participate under this agreement. In 2017, Corn Belt started a major rebuild project of the CTS because much of it is reaching the end of its useful life, a lot of it being built in the late 50s or early 60s, and they've told us that they're likely going to be spending 17 to 18 million dollars a year on improvements for perhaps as long as the next 10 years. In 2017, the total of CTS improvements were about $12.6 million, so NYMECA's share will be about $2.3 million, so that's a big increase from the $750,000 that we've historically done. In 2018, Corn Belt's estimating that the CTS improvements will be about $21 million, which is going to bring NYMECA's share to about $3.75 million. When NYMECA joined the SPP Southwest Power Pool market in 2015, the CTS participants all filed an Attachment H, that's what it's called, for annual transmission revenue requirement with SPP. Corn Belt also did one of these. What an Attachment H does is it's a spreadsheet that you submit to SPP and they use it to calculate regional transmission costs, and you show all of your related costs of transmission in there, so operation and maintenance, depreciation, interest on debt, administrative costs, all of these things go in there, and they're used to calculate the transmission costs for this regional Southwest Power Pool grid. And then by turning over, turning these costs in, we actually get a reimbursement every month for our share of those costs that we put in, or our 11 members do, Corn Belt also So that revenue that comes back, our members use their share for whatever their local governing boards decide. Corn Belt has built that into their rates. If you want more detail on what Corn Belt does with it, I'm sure you can visit with them and they'd be happy to provide you any of that kind of information. So where we're at today, the NYMECA board has discussed and approved having NYMECA finance and own the 2017 improvements. This will allow the CTS participants time to build up cash to pay for even larger expected increase next year for the 2018 improvements. And under this plan then, NYMECA would also file one of these Attachment Hs and be able to recover our costs of having that debt, the depreciation, administrative costs, O&amp;M, et cetera, and NYMECA would start receiving that revenue. Our analysis is that this will provide a long-term financial benefit to our members by being able to recover some of our administrative costs that otherwise that we can't recover. Some of the benefits to doing this, as I said, NYMECA will be able to recover a portion of its operating costs through its ATRR, Annual Transmission Revenue Requirement, and what we've talked about or how we would structure this is any excess revenue that we receive, the NYMECA board has talked about paying out a dividend to our members, then to help offset the dues and service charge that you pay to NYMECA to finance our operations. That would be the main benefit to Webster City if you would want to participate in this. For the other members, it allows them time to build up some additional cash for the improvements that will have to be paid for next year, and we gain some economies of scale by NYMECA just doing financing instead of possibly individual members going out and doing financing and the related costs of borrowing legal fees, et cetera. There are some potential risks with this. We are asking that all of the members that want to participate in this agree to sign a new member agreement, that essentially in that agreement you are guaranteed to back our debt if we can't make the payment. Our projections show that the revenue that we receive from SPP should be sufficient to make the payment and actually have a surplus of about $100,000 a year for the first 15 years, then once the debt is paid off, that number would likely go up to about $400,000 a year. Now this, we can't guarantee those numbers, that's the thing. This has to be submitted to FERC and it has to be approved by FERC. So we don't know what will happen until we get through that process, but based on our prior experience and our projections, we believe that is what it will be, but I cannot make any guarantees to you of that. So with this member agreement, you would be guaranteed to back the debt if we can't make the payment or whatever part of the debt that we can't pay. So say if our debt payment's $300,000, we only get $250,000 in, all of the members would be asked to chip in to make up that $50,000 shortfall. That's just an example. This next page shows what each member would be asked to back of the debt. So Webster City would be 19.72%, and that is based on a load ratio share. What we did is we took a three-year average of each member's peak load, and whatever that was, took that as a percentage of the total, and so in your case that came up to 19.72%. Now Webster City being somewhat unique, where you're not normally a participant in this, if you don't want to do this, that's fine, we will go back and we will recalculate these numbers for the other 12 members. The 11 members that are CTS participants, they have no choice, they are currently obligated to make this payment. So if Webster City and Algonah say no, they, all this will get recalculated and they're on, they have to do it, they don't really have a choice. We think though, and the other members discussed, that if Webster City and Algonah want to do this, that long-term there could be some financial benefit to your community and they're willing to share that if you're willing to also accept part of that risk. If you don't want to do the 19.72%, but you still want to participate, you also have the option to say, "We only want to do 10% or 5% or whatever it might be," and then with these same percentages, whatever they are, whatever future dividend that we might be able to pay out, we'll also get it on this same ratio. So you're, in this case you would be backing 19.72% of the debt, but you would also get that almost 20% of the dividend, any dividends that are paid out. We've sent out several documents. There's a memo from our attorney, Steve Nail, there's a draft of the 2018 CTS Improvements Member Agreement, that's the document that would be the new member agreement where you're guaranteeing the debt, also a summary of the 2018 improvements. And we're, at this point, all we're asking for is feedback from the members on, do they see any issues with this agreement? Do they want any changes? Do they have any concerns? We're encouraging all of the members to have their local attorneys review the agreement because while you're part of NYMECA, our attorney, NYMECA's attorney has reviewed it, and while we think he's watching out for everybody, we don't want anybody to come back and say, "Well, you didn't watch out for our interests," so we're encouraging you to have your attorney look at it if you want. After we receive any feedback from the members, a final version will be provided to the members along with a resolution to adopt that new member agreement. We would expect that at one of your April meetings, depending on what the dates are. And then one last thing, Webster City will also likely be asked to sign a letter agreement with Corn Belt and NYMECA. Just to clarify, that by doing this, you understand that Webster City alone is taking on this responsibility, and that, because normally your transmission would be covered under your Corn Belt agreement, and if, say, we couldn't make the payment and we came to you and said, "We need $20,000 to make the payment," Corn Belt doesn't want you coming to them saying, "Hey, this is a transmission bill, Corn Belt, you should pay for that." And so it would just be a letter agreement clarifying that this is the way that everybody understands that upfront. That's still under development, our attorney was on vacation, he got back today, we talked about it today, and I think that'll come out hopefully here in the next week, and as soon as we have it, I'll get it to Daniel and Adam, Ken, so you guys have that. Questions? Comments?
I have one question on the, you say you have 11 mandatory members?
Yes.
Obligated to back this. Have you spoke with the majority then, already, about this?
I think I've, you're the fourth one I've visited directly now, I think. Most of them, the, maybe their manager has been able to talk to their council. I'm actually going to another one next week, another one the following week, and another one's starting to set up a meeting. So it's kind of in the process of where we're at. Most of them, I think, are on, especially the 11, they're on board with it because they know they're kind of on the hook anyway.
Well, that kind of leads me, my second part of that question is, the reason I ask is, are they kind of hopeful that Webster City and Algonah, the other one that's optional?
Yeah.
Do we stay out of it to up their dividends, or?
They honestly don't care.
Okay.
They're looking at it from the big picture, that they know they could just keep it all for themselves and get the dividend, and they're trying to look at it from the standpoint of, everybody's a member of NYMECA, NYMECA's kind of taking on the risk, so everyone should share the risk and share the reward, trying to take the broader, the broader view.
But it kind of seems to me, between Algonah and Webster City, we would potentially incur potentially 40%, close to 40% of this if in fact it did not go well.
That's correct.
And I guess, as I listen to it doing benefit-cost analysis, seems like there's more benefit to everybody else and there's maybe potential more cost to us, and if we have a separate transmission agreement with Corn Belt, I don't know why it behoove us to get involved in this where we potentially, like they were saying, "Just stick your feet in the water, find out if there's goldfish or piranha in there." You don't know what's in there, and I don't, it just doesn't sound like a good risky thing from an economic point of view, I mean, as far as getting Webster City committed to it. I mean, because both Algonah and us are out of that, so, I mean, I'm speaking my opinion.
And that's the whole risk thing you have to aware. To me, it makes no difference if you do it or not to the rest of the members either, and that's where you as elected officials have to decide what you feel comfortable with on that risk-reward basis.
One other thing, I just want to clarify what you got here. The reason those percentages are what they are is because you said it's a three-year load-share percentage. That would also be, I guess, weighted to our dividend percentage, like you said earlier as well.
Correct.
So has there been any talk to kind of shift those around, whether we want to opt-in or not, maybe not at that level, but at a lower level, and then let the other members bring up that dividend, even though the kilowatt-hours are coming our direction?
So what would happen is, if I'm following you right, say you've said, "We only want to do 10%." What we would do then is we would go back and make an adjustment to these, those numbers so that the, essentially 10% that you're not taking gets shifted back to everybody else. If Algonah wants, we would kind of recalculate what the percentages would be with you at a lower level, say basically at a 50% level in this example, and we would go back and shift it, and if Algonah said, "We don't want any more," then it would all go to the other members, but we would just recalculate it back out.
Yeah, just curious how that would work if we opted to not do that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And one thing I should mention too, if it looks a little odd, when you think of Spencer, Spencer has a direct tie to the WAPA Transmission System, so through, historically their CTS contributions have been their load less their WAPA. WAPA is the Western Area Power Administration, it's hydro power from the dams on the Missouri River, so they've never had to use the CTS to make deliveries of that power because they actually have a direct tie. So whenever we do any of the calculations, it's Spencer's load less WAPA. So if you wonder why Spencer's the largest load and yet their percentage is smaller, that is wise. We did it on the same historical basis as we've done since 1989.
Just so everyone's aware, you know, in terms of the city's current transmission capacity, transmission lines, we do have a small segment in comparison to the broader system, but that transmission line was originally established to have the connection between Webster City and our ownership share in the Neo Four Power Generation Station. That's where, the only transmission system that we own directly, that Webster City has. That portion is assigned essentially to Corn Belt to operate and maintain and cover the cost of that. What this offers is an opportunity to do, thinking down the road, is just gives you another transmission outlet, should Webster City sometime down the road look at additional capacity for power, whether it be both from any of the member communities in NYMECA, or perhaps some other projects that NYMECA kind of enters into such as solar or other renewable energies that they look at from time to time.
Is there any risk in the future of SPP not reimbursing some of those costs?
Not in the present day, you know, to never say never. I know that's not the answer you want to hear, but it, you know, the way, one thing, the way the electrical world is changing, I don't see the transmission grid going away in the near future. That doesn't mean 20 years from now or tomorrow somebody figures out how to do a fuel cell that everybody can put in their backyard and maybe you don't need the grid, but with all of the wind that's being developed, the new demand for, for other renewable energy sources that probably are more likely to be built out here in rural America, just because of space, things like that that are needed, I don't think it's going to happen for this foreseeable future, but, you know, hopefully it's all before we, you know, it doesn't happen till at least we get the debt paid off.
Isn't this going to give us more option in the future then?
Yeah, it gives you an option. Obviously, we're locked in with Corn Belt as our power supplier, and I believe that wholesale contract goes clear out to 2054. It does have an option for, if the city or Corn Belt wanted to terminate that contract, you have to provide a 48-month window of notice, which is, I mean, it's not a simple process to go through because then we're having to figure out both, not only transmission capacity and assets, but also where we're going to buy our power from, and those could probably be jointly together, but this does provide an opportunity down the road if ever we ever wanted to move away from the relationship with Corn Belt and/or consider other power sources, which we're allowed to do under the Corn Belt contract. We want to just bring this to you, obviously this is just a presentation to give you the information, you don't need to make a decision anytime soon, but just want to present to you so that I give you an opportunity to listen to Greg, hear out the project, if you have any questions to have for him, otherwise you can certainly bring this back at a later meeting to where you guys can decide on what direction, if any, you wanted to take.
Are we the only one that can choose a lesser percentage? Us and Algonah?
You and Algonah, correct. And at this point, I know Algonah's board met last week or week before, and the days are starting to blur together, they've met in the last two weeks and their board has indicated they do want to participate at this 24 or 20% level, 20.7%.
So just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, the projection is the SPP would cover all of that cost plus a small dividend, then we would get whatever percentage of that.
Correct.
And the time period where you said, "Once it's paid, it would be greater," once the debt's paid, was that how many years?
We were planning on a 15-year financing. And that's always something too that the NYMECA board will discuss, where if, maybe, maybe the dividend, like I said, if it's $100,000 a year, maybe everybody agrees, "You know what, let's take half of that, give it as a dividend, and half of it, and start paying the debt off sooner to get it paid off." That's always something that can be discussed later too, but that's something we would want everybody to agree on. We can't say, "Webster City wants to pay off the debt, nobody else does," and that starts getting a lot more complicated on how we calculate everything, but...
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Item two is a second reading of a proposed ordinance, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Webster City, Iowa, 1996, by amending Chapter 85, Title 2, Community Protection, Division 2 Enforcement and Animal Protection and Control.
This is a, would be a second reading of the ordinance to amend the animal ordinance that would allow for TNR or groups to step forward, propose a TNR program, trap meter return in Webster City. The language in there remains that feeding of feral cats would remain in place, but allows for groups interested in implementing a TNR program to be able to do so upon approval by the council.
And just to be clear, there's no changes from the first reading?
Right.
Have we talked to the Hamilton County advocates since the first reading again? I know Monica, I think, is here in the crowd, but has there been any feedback to city administration?
Not that I've heard.
Monica, would you like to say anything, or are you? Okay.
I'm going to call for a motion. Move to approve.
Second.
Call those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion approved.
Can we waive the third reading? I'd like to move to do so.
Is this our third?
This is our second.
No reason why we couldn't waive the third, is it?
No.
Move motion or second.
Logan made the motion.
Paul, Tim McKinnon?
Yep. Call those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion approved. Do you want to move past and adopt then?
Move to pass and adopt.
Call those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Motion approved. You can start.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda is a motion on final design of Superior Street and Fair Meadow Drive intersection project. You received the maps in the packet, the map of existing and the proposed Concept C and the cost... Um, you received the maps in the, in the packet, um, map of existing and the proposed concept C and the cost option for one and option two.
So what's on the screen right now, um, this is just another view, uh, from the, different from the maps you've seen at the last meeting. Want to give you some commentary in terms of what exactly is being done, at which portions. Um, plan C entailed, um, widening, um, and scaling or making the, the turning radius as much wider and smoother to, to allow for both vehicles and semi trucks to be able to make those turns, both right-hand and left-hand turns. On all the corners, it also, plan C entailed having a, a specific, a single, uh, right-hand turning lane. So if you were traveling southbound on Superior Street, there would be a dedicated right-hand turning lane to allow vehicles and semi-trailers to, semi-trucks to, to make a right-hand turn and head westbound on Superior Street. So, I don't know if my laser works right. So this would be the, the right-hand turning lane. Um, it would preserve and maintain a, a middle lane that would be for through traffic as well as accommodate and retain the, the left-hand turning lane. Part of this, um, concept, um, one, it'll widen the intersection, but also right now as you approach southbound, um, on Superior, um, the two lanes merge into one. Um, this will maintain the two lanes as you're traveling southbound and allow traffic, um, on both lanes with the right-hand turning lane becoming, uh, um, the single lane that turns to the right. Part of the median under the proposed plan would be cut back, um, and be reduced in size to accommodate tho- those lanes as well as to, uh, accommodate the left-hand turns coming from, from Fair Meadow, turning northbound onto, um, Superior Street. That's the, the overall, um, scope of, of what that plan entails. Here you can see a little closer just in terms of, um, where it's noted on here, where the existing curb is, you have the arrows pointing to that. And then where the new curb would be. So, um, it'll be, uh, cut back quite a bit, um, to allow for those turns. And that's the, aside from the wider intersection, the northbound northeast corner would also be scaled back to allow vehicles and trucks turning, um, northbound to Superior Street to have that ability to make that turn as well. So, there are the other, two other proposals. One would be to completely eliminate the, let me see if I have a picture of it. I think I just have the, the, the estimate. One of the proposals would be to eliminate the median altogether. Um, the engineer's estimate on that was a, a peg at, um, a hundred and forty thousand to be able to do that. The other proposal, um, that is included in the packet would be to widen the northbound lane clear from Red Bull Drive, um, where the county building is, clear up to essentially the driveway by the Calvary Church. That would widen the northbound lane, um, that whole stretch. So I think that's the overall, um, idea behind the proposal. Um, if you have any specific questions on other of the proposals, uh, which direction the council would like to go.
So just to, you know, set the foundation, we, we already agreed upon option C.
Yeah.
Right, so the lanes and everything is always in play. The only, the only thing we're discussing tonight really is, is the finalization of the medians or no medians. Correct? And the possible to north lane.
Yeah, medians and no medians and or, um, remove or widening of that northbound lane from Red Bull Drive, clear up north.
Yes.
Ready for comments?
Yes.
Thanks Connie.
You've got the original everywhere else is copy. Hi, Connie Evans, 1621 E. Court. I've handed to you, um, the result of our recent activities. There are 33 pages containing more than 550 signatures. Our count was 561 and noted that only three indicated their desire to retain the medians. Our original intent was to seek the opinion of only Webster City residents. However, some people, apparently 50 or so, signed because they felt they wanted to express their opinion because they drive through that intersection on a regular basis. This activity is the result of the statements made by the council members at the March 5 council meeting that they didn't know how the residents of Webster City felt about the median situation. These opinion pages were taken to the ladies' luncheon, placed in gas stations, convenience stores, restaurants, auto supply stores, et cetera. We delivered to a retail store at their request and some were personally taken to meet people who called and wanted to register their opinion. Since the council members are elected by the residents of Webster City, it is fitting and right that they show respect and concern for the opinion of the residents they represent. These 33 pages show our opinion on this issue. Overwhelmingly, we say, remove the medians.
You, you realize that this isn't a fair, this is not a fair, um, poll by any means. Because you didn't explain to anybody how, how the, the intersection will change.
We talked to the people who asked questions.
But not, but there was no understanding there when most, when, all I could do, read is what's written there, which do you want to remove the median or not?
And you want to remove?
As people know right now, as, if you drive up to the median as it is right now today, 99% of the people in town would say they want to go.
The paper itself at the top says, the council has already voted to change the, I'll read it. The Webster City City Council voted at their meeting on March 5 to change the intersection at Fair Meadow and Superior Street, the McDonald's Corner. They are asking for input from the citizens of Webster City to help them decide whether to retain or remove the medians. That was the issue. If you live in Webster City, please sign and indicate your preference, retain or remove.
But that wasn't the issue.
That's the issue. I understood and I think that's what Logan just said. You voted for, you already made the decision for plan C and the only thing that there was disagreement on that's going to be decided tonight is median or no median, right?
Well, it's not, it's not medium, not a medium. It's median or whether we're going to widen the road, whether we're going to, whether we're going to leave the medians as the design is, whether we're going to remove the medians altogether or whether they're going to widen the road on the north side.
Okay, we're addressing the aspect of that where you're talking about median or no median or change the median. We're saying.
But the problem, you didn't, but what you didn't explain to anybody is that, that the new design does not, you know, means that the, the median won't be an issue for anybody anymore.
The medians are still an issue. They don't want medians. Some of the comments we heard were, no other town, they can't think of any town that welcomes people into their community with medians.
I can show you, I've been to thousands of towns.
I'm just telling you what other people have said. They were scrambling over each other to sign, get rid of the medians. They don't like the medians.
With all due respect, I think what, what, uh, Becky and Connie were able to do is, was to, to use one, uh, avenue to, to pull the community. I do understand that, you know, the explanation of adding two lanes, uh, southbound was not explained because I think some of the headache is the bottleneck. However, you know, uh, like they referred to a minute ago, some of the comments that were made in the March 5 meeting were, oh, I haven't really heard much uproar. I really don't know what the people think. And we all were tasked to spend these last two weeks to go out in any, any way, shape or form we can to gather that input. And I, I'm sure we all have.
On Jim's Facebook page, how many did you get? Your Facebook?
I had about over 1,300 views and I had about 40 comments. And firstly, everybody wants them taken out.
Exactly.
Some do want four lanes, but, uh, as I said, the majority of them wants out. I talked to a lot of people. They want them out.
Yeah, I will say, I was surprised. I expected we'd have maybe 20%, 15%, 25% say, keep the medians for this or that or some other reason. Three versus 558 is pretty overwhelming.
I still don't think it was a fair, fair poll because it wasn't, nothing was explained about the way the intersections were changed.
That's okay.
You also didn't explain the safety factor of, I mean, we're going to talk here, we talk all the time about safety factors and yet somebody, somebody comes into town, so if somebody has an accident here, we remove these safety barriers, which is what they are. And somebody next week comes into town and slides in and has a head-on collision and someone dies, this city will be held responsible.
They are even.
100%.
You are on Main Street now.
Don't know.
And if someone jumps over the median and kills someone, you still are too.
No, we're not because we have the median there, which may, if, once you remove this me, this safety barrier, then you will be 100% in the wrong. You won't have any comeback.
I don't believe that.
You go ask your insurance guy. Now, we already did.
I drive that road every morning. I drive that road every morning to work, home at lunch and back at work. When you see somebody that's got plates from out of town, they're on the inside lane because usually that's the through lane.
But that won't be there anymore.
Hear me out.
Mm-hmm.
This truck was going, you know, it's 35, he's going faster. I was going faster with 35, but anyway, he's just going. He's expecting to go, all of a sudden, boom, he's got to merge. Guess where he's coming? He's coming right in front of me. A, he's going to hit that thing or he's going to hit me. I slow down because he's out of town plates. So he's driving, he's, he's going 40, he just keeps on going. Those medians are not slowing anybody coming into town or going out of town.
But they're not meant to slow, what, my, my, my problem here is that when you come into town and you hit your brakes, which is what you do. The, we never used to have lights there at all.
I grew up in this town. There was four lanes with no lights.
There was no lights, that's right.
I'm here tonight because where's the other lane coming north into town for the ambulance? I've seen accidents. I've seen that, that whole intersection shut down. I have not seen any proposed lane to widen it for two to go north.
Isn't there a, isn't, isn't the hospital to the left, like Red Bull Drive?
Yeah, you basically built that there.
So you can't turn on Red Bull Drive and come around the courthouse there, so? You can't?
You cannot.
Yes, you can.
You can stay in that, call it, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, can you, can you come up to the stadium and?
For the public.
Because yeah, that's for people that know.
My name is Barb Kay. I live here. I live on 138 Third Street, right down here. Like I said, I grew up in this town. We had four lanes. The hospital was on Ohio. There's multiple places that the ambulance could get out into town. Right now, the whole east side is cut off. We have racetrack out there, east side of town. You, you come in to the hospital, you come out, there's one way.
There's two ways out of the hospital.
Well, if you're going south of town, but if you're coming into town, you have to go either clear over to Duane Street and back down to go back out to east side.
Not following you.
I'm not following what, what, I'm not following what the.
Can you bring up the four lane right now the way it is? Not that four lane. Put north to the north. I don't think they can.
What, what are you trying to show? Yeah, what, what intersection?
Can you see where the hospital is at all?
Yeah, right there.
Okay, so we need to head that direction.
So ahead north?
Intersection.
Fair Meadow.
Fair Meadow, right there in the intersection. There is no road to get you from here out. Over here on Edgewood Drive, there is a place to go. You have the apartment buildings, which are here. This is your one main road here. It comes up here when there's an accident here and I've seen it. This, you have one lane into town. Going this way, that's where the only way the ambulance can go clear out and around and get back in. This used to be wider. I think there's room in the ditch. You could fill that thing back in and put another lane into town. We need two lanes.
Well, that, that I agree with, except.
Well, I haven't seen any proposed and you guys are passing things pretty quick here.
That's because we didn't want to spend half a million dollars or actually it's probably more than that. So we put the extra lane.
Cutting out, this is a company in Iowa. It's been in town before. They can modify your cement, cut it down, whatever you got to do, but I'm sure it's not going to be as expensive as what I've seen in the paper here. But like I said, as a citizen, we've had, how many head-on crashes here in all these years when there was no stoplights?
Nope, didn't you just share that data today for us?
The three, we got three accidents there this year, but we haven't had any accidents.
Like I said, I, I look at that corner, I've seen plenty of accidents.
The traffic islands have been there. See, the traffic islands have been there for the last, what, 10, 12 years now? So there, so there hasn't been any head-on accidents.
The median's a nuisance. It's a nuisance. You could have rollovers, people hit that thing. I've seen semis rip the signs down. I've had semis that we've seen watching get towed off of corners. I understand you guys are working on the churning radius. But the way it is right now, a lot of our people that bring goods to town, the semi drivers.
You haven't said any one reason why we should remove the islands though.
I'm giving one right now.
No, because everything you've said, we are, we are already, we have already addressed. We've addressed all those things that you said about semi trailers and all that has already been addressed.
Except listening to the people up in the mall.
The semis, you know, they bring foods into town and stuff. We're not one of those communities that we can just shut everybody off and we don't like those big truck traffic. We need them to come into town to bring stuff. And I guarantee they're cussing us constantly in this town because coming in and out of it is not easy.
That's why we're fixing, that's why we're addressing this intersection and so we're addressing the intersection.
Well, as we're doing the intersection, my thought is, let's do it right and add another lane so that our ambulance, because our hospital is now located right there, that it needs to be having quick access into town. We have a racetrack that's located in east side of town Saturday night, so pretty busy. Right now, the ambulance comes out there, there's, there's an accident there. It's got to go clear over to Duane Street, back to Fair Meadow, down Duane, back Ohio or whatever. There is no other avenues.
You're talking adding lane northbound.
Mm-hmm. When you widen the road, we need another lane north into town. That's why I'm here.
And just to clarify to you, the, the $140,000 is the removal of both the north and south side, correct?
I believe so. You, you, you talked about not having another access and, and obviously whenever you have development, they're responsible for paying and putting in the infrastructure, road, water, sewer, whatever infrastructure is involved. Couple meetings ago, the council approved the resolution for a developer looking at that site directly east of the hospital, which would extend, uh, would be Fair Meadow out to Edgewood Drive.
Put an alternate path.
And put an alternate path. So if his, if his plans come together and he moves forward, you're going to have an alternate path for both people on Edgewood Drive as well as for the hospital to be able to exit and get around that bottleneck if you ever do have an accident on Fair Meadow and Superior.
But that's not in play yet either. In the meantime, it's a bottleneck. It's one lane that's shut down or cut off.
The council approved the resolution approving that developer's request to apply for workforce housing credits.
Okay, I'm sorry, I've been attending these. I don't know the correct way, but I just know that I live in the community. I voice my opinion. There's no north lane. I've never seen any plans that says anything about a north lane. And it, you guys are passing stuff pretty quick here. I just want to make sure that that is not up.
If we don't pass this quick, then we won't. I mean, we've already got the fellow who wants to pay for most of this. That's why we need to get something done soon.
But do you have family on the east side? If it takes long for that ambulance to get there, is it, you know, until something major happens, it's not going to be addressed.
Well, I can, I can address an ambulance issue. I'll do so.
You're not doing the money incorrectly. I appreciate you coming. I understand the, the frustration and I get it. And, and I, and I feel even if that developer were to, to, to bring that road into us, it, it's still not the entryway to our community. It's still a, a tight, um, lane for agricultural vehicles implements and, and even semis for that raised median on the, on the south side and just the one lane. So I get it. Even with a, an alternate path, I still feel we need a wider lane and no median. So I agree with you 100%. So you, you.
Well, if you leave a median, do it the minimal amount, my goodness, it doesn't need to bump out like that. It really doesn't.
Well, it's, it will be trimmed back a bit, but, but I agree with you. I think that we should add four lanes. That's, I think that's, I think that's.
And I don't like the train lane because when I'm on my way to work, the first car in front of me is always going straight and I have to wait. But if it means safety and we can get a northbound lane because we have so much to work with, then get rid of the right lane turn. We can keep doing what we're doing now, but that median needs to go.
When you say so much to work with, you mean land?
Yeah. I mean, that ditch by farm credit, that, it can be filled in. When you look down, you say you're going to make it merge out to Calvary Baptist Church right now, that's where the four lane starts again. That used to be full, four lane right, all the way up to the intersection. So it was there before.
So really from my opinion, it's, it's two different discussions. We're talking past the intersection now. Because if you get rid of the median, you're still not adding a lane. Basically, we put in less concrete to the west and you'd still have lanes coming out. You still have one lane going into town.
But we could widen it, right?
You could, you could, you could make a second lane as a second project or as a add-on to the project. There's al- alternatives there. But as far as the intersection goes, that's kind of a separate piece, in my opinion.
So as far as your DOT recommendations, what do they recommend on it? This is our major crossroads for our hospital.
DOT was the one that helped and paid and designed that intersection to begin with.
Was it before the hospital was built there?
It was, but it was, the hospital was being built when that intersection was changed.
Well, like you said, before we had, there was lots of ways the ambulance could get out. Right now, we're very limited. We're very limited.
Have we heard any comments from the hospital? Because I, I worked at the hospital for 15 years and never heard the ambulance crew once talk about an issue.
To get through there. I've seen that lane shut down. So that's my concern. Like I said, I worked there on the corner. I've seen. Like I said, I worked there on the corner, I've seen it.
Thank you.
I wanted to bring it up, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I, I will say I respect the opinions that, that you did get, but I do agree with John, not giving the entire picture to people makes it difficult to, because I, I saw in some of the comments on Facebook, when you read the post that's similar, um, that Jim put out, there was probably five or six of them that by the way they posted, you could tell they didn't know the change of the intersection. And I'm afraid you're gonna have the same thing, that they don't understand, there's nothing in there about the cost of a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars and the discussion of what changed on the intersection.
When I delivered those petitions around town, I specifically talked to everyone.
Peggy, excuse me, Peggy, do you wanna get off the podium?
No, please, no.
Well, then, then please not talk anymore, thank you.
Let's do, let's do this, let's just put those petitions on hold for a minute. I, I love them, I, I appreciate your gals' work getting that input. Let's put them on hold and let's just talk to us about what we gather personally, and what the opinions, maybe what were the, the pendulum was leaning within our own work to, to, to come to a decision on this tonight, and also, and also there's this crowd that like.
John, did you wanna come up and say something? Did you wanna come up?
Can I talk?
Yeah, come on up to the podium.
Excuse me, Harold. Isn't talking is a hearing's problem. Plus, the sixty-six is well represented here tonight, folks. Hi, again, um, couple things, uh, I think she brought up about racing up the hill with a car right beside you trying to make the connection so you don't get pushed off, and I think that's absolutely insane and, and at night in the dark, you know, so if you can do something about that, be good. I, I, I really think, if you postpone this a little bit, like what you're trying to do maybe a little, is, is that I would be glad to drive anybody or get some form of transportation and take you down to Story City, which is a four-lane road, Interstate thirty-five, not unlike Highway twenty, and goes right off into a, a intersection, not unlike Fair Meadow. And there is no concrete medium, there's no concrete, anything, it's painted, and it's wide, and I think if you go look at that, I think you'd be impressed, um, because it allows the big trucks, that's what you want, the trucks to turn, and you want, uh, uh, safe lanes. What I find is we come up the hill on Superior and finally somebody's pulled in front of you, then you lock the brakes on because they're going sixty miles an hour, so, anyway, that's enough for me, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, but what I was saying, like, not necessarily put it on hold or, or kick it down the, the road in another, no pun intended, a couple weeks, but, uh, to, to just take those petitions, and if we disagree that they're valid, then, but just, just know that that opinion's out there. Maybe not the full story, I agree, that maybe some of the people that sign those petitions are unaware there are two lanes now southbound. So other than that, what are some other forms of, uh, feedback we have received in the last two weeks?
Well, I think there's two points we're missing here when it comes down to it. I think over the years, at one time, uh, people were very frustrated because we were not hearing back to the council from the community. Now we've had different venues, we've got Facebook, we've got a petition, and things of this nature, and I know that was one of the big issues several years ago, whether input was sought or not, people weren't listened to. Now we have the opportunity, and the old saying is, have I been listened to and have I been heard? We're listening, but are you really hearing what people are saying, and the people reality, whether we widen that, but the majority of the people that I have talked to, and what you've seen on Facebook, I don't know, quite a few people have looked on what I've got on Facebook, the reality is, the people really want those out, and they're talking about four lanes, I mean, this is just a practical point of view. But I came in yesterday off of twenty, going northbound, and if you look at the black marks, the ones north on those mediums, there is black marks virtually almost all the way through.
Which does that mean that people, that that's actually preventing accidents, because people are trying to cross that?
I don't know what it mean, I mean, you know, you're asking me to hypothesize on why I should black, maybe there are.
To me, as a person who professionally drives, I would say, well, that means there's a lot of bad drivers, but, but if you're running into the island, all done. So I haven't hit it once, and I'll come through there and prove it.
I, I can't, no, you're asking me for an opinion, I'm not giving, I'm just telling you what I know.
Well, that is, you're arguing your opinion.
No, I'm saying that they're black, that's a fact. How people run into them, whether they do them deliberately or accidentally, I mean, that's, only they know what they've done. And, you know, we get in that type of scenario, uh, now, we're asking people to be, come in and provide input to us, and we need to really be open-minded about this, and I like the Plan C, but I would like to see everything gone out of there.
As a median. As a median.
Yep. Because one person had mentioned, uh, paint and put those strips, what they call them, they wake you up when you cross the center line, put those in, I mean, that would have the same effect, I mean, what do they call them, bumble strips, I don't know how that term is.
I disagree that it would have the same effect, because the median's gonna stop you from hitting the car that's coming towards you.
I don't know if it's stopping or not.
That's hypothetical as well, I mean, we're basing it on.
That's not hypothetical, because if you were sliding on ice and you were coming, you're gonna slide, if you were coming down at the light and sliding on the ice, that island will stop you sliding under the other lane.
Depending on.
Or it has a chance, it has a chance.
It will stop, it will stop a semi trailer from sliding, because I know that for a fact, because it has done many. You're not, you're not in this, not in this place, but in another, in another town altogether.
Get on Logan's point. Acknowledging that we, that you got some input from residents, um, I will say, in your defense county, it would've been really hard to put all of the stuff we're talking about in something somebody could read really quick while they're getting a coffee, and then, um, I just think if I was stopping at the gas station, I read this, said retain or remove those medians, without any other information, I would've said, heck yeah, remove them. But being that I know what we're doing, and that we have, as a council, have actively pursued all of what we've done with Quick Star and, and our contribution financially to do what we're doing to this intersection, I think we are, we are listening to the public, because we're taking care of the issues that the median's caused by fixing the intersection, and what I would like, what, what I would like to see is retaining the medians, because it's a safety feature, and I do not, it does not make sense to me to spend over a hundred thousand dollars to remove a safety feature, and not just, are we, we're not just supposed to listen to citizens, we're, we're there to provide some fiscal responsibility, and to me, that's part of this too. Um, the people that aren't necessarily in the know on all the different attributes, they expect us to do our homework and make the right decision.
I, I can agree to some of that, Brian, I mean, we are, we have to be fiscally responsible. However, like, I'll reiterate some sentiments I made on the March fifth meeting. We shut down this intersection for a month or two, I think that the engineer that was here, the person representing the engineering firm, our construction firm, uh, said it may take a month or two, uh, not necessarily shut down, but, but bring it down to a lane or two of controlled traffic. And reopen this intersection with medians, uh, it's gonna be a very confusing time in Webster City and a very frustrating time. Um, as elected official, yes, I have to be cautious of tax dollars, I also have to be cautious of the public safety. I, I, I feel this is a, a, a safety device in a sense, is it required? No. I represent the people who elect me and, and what they feel is best for Webster City, I don't necessarily tell them what they, what I feel is best for that. If that makes sense.
Well, I think we talked last time, we were talking about the statistical validity, uh, the stat, and what we had, because we just had a few people. And, uh, you know, you take the total population, then you determine the number of response you have, then that starts determining validity of your statistical analysis. And when we come into it, going back to the last report, we had forty-five hundred fifty-six meters in town, but that's not forty-five hundred fifty-six buildings, because some buildings have four or five meters on them, you know, if they're apartments and things like that. But then if we take this five hundred and fifty people that responded, not all Webster City people, what'd you say, fifty outside? So fifty, so the population of, uh, eight thousand plus of one out of sixteen people we've heard from. Then you figure the children and, uh, people that don't drive. So I think we got a fair representation, you know, people wanna take a hard look at it, I mean, I see both sides of the issue. But I think the reality is right now, people are very frustrated with it.
And I agree with that, my, my concern is, you've got however many you don't know, knew the whole story of what the redesign and what the cost is, because this doesn't say anything about it, and that's my concern.
Then I, then I would, again, we're playing hypotheticals and playing the game of statistics, then I would, I would have to push that list against how many people subscribe to the Freeman Journalists and the KQWC, because that was all explained after our last council meeting and the council meeting before that. The, the dollar is included in this and the current layout, there's a picture of it in, in the front of the paper, actually, the two lanes heading southbound. Now, yes, we can argue back and forth all day, was that the clearest picture? Maybe not. Was it one avenue to gain feedback? Yes. And we can weight that any way we want, but I guarantee all of us have had somebody come up to us, probably more than the other way, come up to us saying we don't want the medians, and maybe we sat down and explained to them, it's gonna cost a hundred and forty thousand dollars. It may be a little less safe, it may not relieve all the frustrations you have with that, that intersection. But still, the majority of the people I talked to wanted them gone, after I've explained all of those. And that's what I stand today, as, as in March fifth.
Majority of the people that I was, that spoke to me about it, actually, after I explained to them, they said, well, they didn't care whether they stayed or not. So, I don't know, that's a.
The common thing I got brought to me is, how do, how do ambulance and fi, or how do fire trucks get out of town? The thing we discussed with Chuck, this intersection and the way it's laid out will not interfere per our fire chief. And then, uh, semi's pulling it out, everybody's been on that corner and seen a semi not make that corner. This eliminates that also, so, once I explain to them that this intersection change fixes those two issues, they might still think the medians don't make sense, but they aren't causing the issues that they once were.
And I think they do, I mean, just based on how this, now granted, the intersection has changed from before the hospital when it was basically stop signs and, and it was through, I think, at that time. But people go out of town, hit this intersection at forty-five or fifty miles an hour. And the, the one document that I reviewed, I don't know if it was on National Highway Transportation or which one it was, that said one of the benefits of having medians is to slow, it slows traffic down. I don't think you can say how much, but I think just the fact that it's there, you're not gonna go as fast through that intersection.
And I'm, I'm not being contentious, mad at all, but I, I'm just asking, is that because of a bottleneck? Or is that because just the physical curve being there to slow down afraid to hit it?
I think you probably have both, I think you don't have two lanes anymore, which is, is an effect. But then also that it's funneled a little by one, I think you probably have both. It's a guess, but.
What makes the bump out necessary?
Well, the bump out's gone.
The bump out's not gone.
Totally? In the new plan, it's gone?
Yeah, that inside lane is through and the, and so is the.
Cause this plan makes it look like it's still on there, it's just shaved down.
It's, it's shaved down because you've still have the left turn lane.
The way it, the way it affects now where they have to come to stop.
Your southbound lane will not stop, neither lane will stop until it gets to the light.
Is that, that's part of this picture?
If you scroll a little bit to the right, you should be able to see it.
It's a little unclear.
So that triangular spot there, that's the bump out?
Right, but now we're two lanes, not one.
Nope, it's staying. The bump out's staying?
But it's cut back.
The bump out has to stay, because otherwise you're in, then your left lane would, would run into the people that have stopped turning left.
So basically, you're directing two lanes of traffic southbound.
You still have two left, you have two left lan, two lanes all the way to the traffic light, which is what you used to have before. It's exactly as it was before.
The, the farthest west.
Only difference is now you have a left turning lane, which is why you still need the island to be there, because otherwise you would run into the people turning left.
So the people that are going straight through town are gonna be affected by that bump out?
No.
Just take it in lines.
That was the original design, without the bump outs and the curving gutter. That was approved by the council.
Was it?
Yeah.
Before Sador?
Sador, they did it his way.
And, and I think that comes, that's where some of the issues come from, you know, the distrust of, of a former city manager and like some, some frustration they had there. Again, if we're redoing this intersection, why don't we do it the way we wanted to do it ten years ago? And that's why I'm pushing to remove the medians. It's not because I wanna cross my fingers and hope nobody gets hurt, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not arguing the fact that they are, are not safety features. I don't know, I, I, I'm not a, 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 an expert on, on traffic control. I feel the lights control the speed of the intersection and speed signs, and anything above that is, 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 uh, uh, careless driving, um, by the user of the vehicle. I just feel like if we're gonna redo this intersection, let's do it right, I don't wanna counsel in ten years redoing it a third time, because a different makeup decides, yes, we wanna take those curves out, when we could've done it this time, with some of Quick Trip's money or Quick Star's money.
Amen.
Unless, since, of course, in ten years' time, the council decides to put the islands back, because.
Well, that'd be cheaper. Well, that would be cheaper. Cause you don't have to redo anything, you just build up where the paint was.
I still think, you know, it's, it's going backwards by removing that islands. If you have them there as a safety issue, they're, they're used in safety issues, this, this isn't the only town in the country that has them, trust me. And I don't know, if anybody here travels very much, but I travel every week, and I go to a lot of towns, a lot of cities every week, and they, most of them have some form of islands somewhere. And in fact, most of the new cities that you go to where they're doing all their expansions are putting islands in, because it's a safety issue. Anyway, we, we gave, we gave them paperwork on that. Um, I do agree, though, that it would be better if we had four lanes all the way to the interstate, interstate.
There you go.
Because, but you kept, taking the islands out won't fix that, it won't get you that.
You got on us for spending a hundred and sixty bucks on a stop sign that we were, we had to purchase at that price, and now you're like, a hundred and forty's not that much.
Better to spend the hundred and forty than the money for the walking paths.
That are done?
I don't necessarily agree with that.
I, I like that our, I love that our, I like that our citizens can walk safely. Anyways.
Listen to the people.
So where, where we're at, I guess today is, is, uh.
You need a motion.
We need a motion, decision from the council, which direction?
I moved to remove the medians.
So to go with Concept C, which we've already decided?
That's already decided, right?
Concept C is already been.
We've already decided, so that the only, the only issue is the medians, which I, I motioned to remove.
So no Option D as far as another lane, is that a different day, is that, I mean, if we're gonna do the intersection, why not do it right the first time?
I don't think we, we have the land to do it.
Well, we, we have the, there has been no design for that.
Yeah, the, the drop-off on that, on that northbound lane is, is, I guess, I, I'm not an engineer, but I, I would assume if we're already talking about a project that's well north of six hundred thousand, before we even touch the medians or a, a northbound lane, you're gonna push this project well over a million to do two lanes, two northbound lanes, which.
Or go the turn right lane then, keep it the lanes that they've got, safety comes first.
You're saying, you're saying don't put the, the east side lane?
I'd love it, but I, I mean, if it's safety first, I would forego that lane to have another lane into town. People go up White Fox all the time, I see ambulances, everybody come flying down through there, and emergency vehicles that are backup, and there's people that still have to get work from their home and go through that intersection all the time, so if, if it ever is shut down, people are cut off.
I understand your frustration, and unfortunately, we haven't had that designed, we haven't had the, the cost come back for what that, to, to do that, the undertaking. Um, right now, we're, we're just addressing, and just to give you a little background, the reason we're even addressing this issue is because Quick Star kind of expedited things coming to pass that intersection, so we had to address some issues with the truck traffic. And now while we're at it, I just wanna make it ideal for Webster City, what it wants, but, um, if, if making two lanes northbound is ideal, we, I'd, I'd be happy to look into that, again, that, that dollar amount might be something to gasp at once we do look at it, but, you know, I do understand.
If you look at it, it was there before.
It's a threshold to our community, it really is, it's, it's our south threshold to, to Webster City, I want it to be right.
So we have a motion by Welch, second by Talbot, to remove the medians at the intersection of Fair Meadow Drive and Superior Street. So we'll do a roll call vote, Hawkins?
No.
McKinney?
No.
Miller?
No.
Talbot?
Yes.
Welch?
Yes.
So did anyone else wanna make another motion? So did anyone else wanna make another motion?
I, I just, I motioned to keep, we're going with concept C, no medians, no changes.
No medians?
No median, or no. No changes.
I'll second.
See, it's, this is a motion to get, to just leave it as.
Concept C as presented.
No changes.
And no changes. So it's been no money.
Is that what you're motioning? Is that what you're seconding?
Yes, yes, yes.
So we have a second motion. Concept C with, as presented with no changes. McKinney?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Talbot?
No.
Welch?
No.
Hawkins?
Yes. Okay. Moving on. Item four is a resolution accepting and approving the minor subdivision plat of Sahai's second edition Webster City, Iowa.
Let me just see if I can bring it up. So if he, if the council recalls, um, several months ago, we started on the process of, and looking at acquiring some ground, farm ground approximately southeast of the water tower of Highway 20. City currently owns about 36 acres, uh, right by the water tower, and this would add an additional, I believe, 120 acres, how that was taken.
This would add, uh, a little under 60 acres.
So it's just part of it.
Yeah.
So, the, the original notion was looking at additional ground for a future wastewater site. Um, we've been working with Dr. Sahai, um, on acquiring that ground. This is to plat, do a minor subdivision plat, um, and continue to move down that process.
While you're pulling that up, I'll help clarify a few things too. The reason we have to plat this is because it's obviously within the two mile, and it's a portion that's never been platted before. Previously, the city, if you look on the map, there's a strip, a hundred foot strip, um, if you wanna, if you wanna point to it. The city has already acquired this, we acquired this, uh, uh, first of January, um, we acquired the hundred foot strip, you guys approved it. That, we had to do that in order to plat this next portion, uh, because you can't plat a property unless you have an access, that's the access to it. Now we have to plat it in order to then purchase it. Uh, we've done, our office handled all the process of getting all the necessary signatures, uh, considering the orders. Ran through P and Z, all of that. So now you guys are just approving the plat, allowing that to now be considered Sahai's second edition. Once you approve that, I'll bring it back then with a purchase of that portion. Working with Sahai's attorney to get all that done, then you guys, uh, will purchase that according to the purchase agreement that you guys approved, uh, in December.
Okay, call for a motion?
I, I wanna discuss that because we've talked about that, and you recall my contention was at that time, we had that land on top of the hill. And, uh, the question, the statement was that Vera Blue had an option on it. And so their option has lapsed. And because part of the reason we looked at, we would sell that land on top of the hill to Vera Blue, and part of that money for that sell land would offset the purchase prices, Sahai's land. Okay, so my understanding is now the Vera Blue deal has fallen through. So, I guess my question is, why can't we use existing city land instead of purchasing additional land?
You're proposing that we use the Vera Blue option land for the water?
Well, no, that's the city land that Vera Blue had an option on.
Right, that's where you want it?
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, because we own the land there, and now we're talking a million and a half dollars to buy land from Sahai. And we already got land up there that's been sitting there for, uh, what, 2014 election, some, 2013, 2014 when they bought it. And that was supposed to be for development, and so that hasn't been developed. So I guess I would like to see it, you know, I'm, I'm not dismissing what Planning Zoning said, but, you know, I don't know if those folks knew about, you know, the option that Vera Blue had at that time. And so, that time has come and gone because Vera Blue hasn't bought the land, obviously, so.
But the P and Z haven't got anything to do with, with our finance.
No, 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 I understand that. No, I'm, no, I'm not, I'm not dismissing the work they did, I'm just bringing this up as an option.
But this is purely about the plat, this isn't about purchasing.
I know, but I'm just bringing this up as a discussion.
Yeah, I guess my memory of that, Jim, is, we, if it did happen, we were, we were looking forward to that being bought. If it didn't, we still wanted to proceed, was how I felt about it.
Well, I guess my question, we all got, if we'd gotten money from that, that would offset this, because I mean, this is, this is land sitting out. And once you have money to buy land, you don't have $600,000 to fix a road, so I guess, sometimes I just get confused. But I'm never an accountant.
That is a different, different lot of money, but you, you can't spend that other money on the roads, unfortunately.
Connie Evans, I'm still at 1620, want me to court? In Webster City, in Hamilton County even. Um, you don't normally plat something unless you're planning to buy or sell. So yeah, that's all tied together. I've been coming to these meetings, and my understanding was the biggest reason we needed this land was because we had to build a new water treatment plant, because the current one wasn't gonna be adequate to fill Vera Blue's needs.
Well, not just Vera Blue's needs.
I know, but because of their extensive, massive water usage, that's what prompted this. Kinda like, we're, we're redoing our intersection because we're getting up with it, we had a foreseeable need. Well, the stories I'm hearing are that that need's not gonna be there at all. Is that what you're hearing? Are we?
I would, well, it's, it's not, it's not at the scale that they were originally talking, no.
We're already pushing the limits of our nitrogen content, right? Like with, without.
Well, in 2021, we were gonna have to do something with the plant anyway, but, but that's.
And we can't just redo our plant?
No, because it, our plant won't, we can't redo our plant, current plant to wave to the new specification.
I think we looked into it, like, a few different ways, like redoing, adding on, and new, and I think this is probably the most cost-effective way.
Well, all those ways.
To buy land instead of use something we already own?
Well, all those ways, well, to reuse the existing or modify the existing or update the existing all ended with, we need to build a new one eventually.
Yeah.
And, and one, the biggest issue out of this, and tell me if I'm wrong, guys, is based on rules and regulations, there's nowhere in Webster City we can put one, based on residents being too close.
Right.
Or landfill, you, like, there's, there's some land, but it's like built on a landfill. And you gotta have access to the river, or you can't be a thousand feet from another, you know, water user, so it's, it's. So it, it kinda paints us in a corner, in a sense, where you almost have to acquire some new land. So, the, the council came to the agreement, it's probably been almost six, seven, eight months now, that, that we probably should go with grabbing some land while we can, especially the ideal, um, plot of land, um, and, and then, uh, plan ahead. Now, do we need to build a plant next year? Probably not. Can we, can we wait five, six years? Maybe. But it'd be nice to have that ideal plot of land ready for when we do need to, so.
That's, that's really what's pushing us now, is the fact that we don't, that's, when we looked around for another place to put this, this was the perfect place to put it.
But good questions, Connie, and, and good ones to raise.
And, and unfortunately, you know, like Jim said, we were hoping that selling that land would've paid for it originally, but unfortunately, that hasn't come about.
Cost, yeah.
Yeah. But, yeah, we're hoping for some winners somewhere. So where we're. No, we'll just, yeah, okay. So we'll call for a motion.
Still moved?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same side. Next on the agenda is item five. Motion on request from Community Vitality Director to attend regards, regards to rural 2018 Rural Development Initiatives Conference in Eugene, Oregon, to be held on May 18th to 20th, 2018. Lindsay, do you wanna, yes?
Do you want me to?
Yeah, you did.
You sat here this long.
Um, and I think, Dana, you can verify, the reason this happens before council is because of the distance travel, not because of the cost. So there's other conferences that are right here that end up getting just as much, but because of the distance and asking to travel. This conference in particular, um, is built around the framework for, uh, community wealth building, um, and one of the WealthWorks frameworks that I personally have spent a lot of time studying through my, uh, professional development and my graduate studies. What that is, is looking for ways to grow and invest in ourselves with the resources that we already have, rather than looking for outside saving companies to come and invest that may or may not have lasting ties in the community. So if you're looking at particular, particular market sectors, such as value-added agriculture, you're saying, is there any parts of that value chain that we're currently, um, insourcing or importing to the community that we might be able to develop that wealth locally to meet our goals better? So an example might be, we have Vera Blue, they have waste from their, from their fish, that turns into very nutrient, uh, rich nutrients for making compost or for aquaponics, for growing organic produce. You look to find what those market opportunities are, to build companies, train your own, um, residents and things like that to actually fill that need and reduce costs and build wealth locally. Um, entrepreneurial communities are ones that are able to identify those market values, or those market value chains, um, and assess risks and, and, you know, mobilize resources to take advantage of those opportunities. There's no conferences or anything in the media area that's looking at this. This is happening, there's hubs around the US. All of those hubs that follow the WealthWorks framework are meeting at this conference in Oregon. They have invited me, after reaching out to them, to talk to them, to be a part of their peer networking, their peer, uh, workshops they're having, peer-to-peer workshop. At a reduced rate, they've cut the cost of me attending the conference. Um, and would like, and welcome me into their circle to learn more about that framework and look at being maybe one of the first ones to start implementing it here in the Midwest. I'd like to look outside the box, literally, I want, um, for innovative strategies, and I'm concerned with sustainable lasting wealth in our community. So I thought it was a really good opportunity to attend this conference. And it has been confirmed that Corn Belt, we have an attraction and a retention fund with them every year, an allotment. And out of that, um, they can refund 50% of the expense for this trip, so.
So the total cost of the city will only be $822.50?
Right.
Oh, very good. I, I, I think it's a great experience and a great opportunity to network outside of Iowa. I mean, you can't run in the same circles for a while, you know, you see the same people in Iowa, go to the same conferences, so, uh, I'm all for it, represent us well, and have fun.
Well, I have two questions, though, as I looked at that material, what was presented, part of theirs for Oregon was, they were talking about bringing, uh, what do you call that, uh, internet, uh, bringing, you know, to the rural areas. You know, and that was part of one of the things they looked at, and I guess, you know, that's, we've got a lot of that here, so we're pretty well saturated as far as heck. But the other thing is, my question, uh, you had the announcement a couple of weeks ago about University of Iowa, sending all those people up here. Are we somewhat duplicating the process? I mean, I don't know what they're bringing in, I mean.
Very, very different things, um, although one of the proposed items that went, or one of the things that was included in the proposal to University of Iowa was for help looking at and assessing what opportunities we have for building some more community-based enterprises or, um, cooperative developments, more locally developed wealth. What University of Iowa is coming in to do is to look at a number of different projects we proposed and are still putting together. I'm, I'm re, meeting with different people from the community now. And, um, you know, they help you come up with different designs, so if it's a park improvements, they come up, you know, it saves us on engineering costs, it saves us on design costs, they come up with what the cost estimates would be, so that down the road, we know exactly what we would like to do, we have a picture of our community, what we want it to be after we make these investments. So that's, it's a very different program from this, although related, because both, this conference is focused on more sustainable economic development, and that is also the, the goal and the focus of the, so they, they, they're not, it's not a duplication, but a complementary approach, I guess.
Yeah, that's a question I want, so.
So when I started on the council, um, the role you took over, the economic development, um, the common thing I heard about your predecessor was he, he knew people and had connections he had made from his previous job. And I feel like, once it came to being in this role, he ceased to continue to go out and build those, those groups, and I think it's money well spent to get you in those groups. Somebody's done something that you could learn off of. And I think it's just like, you know, training the fire department or police, we need to, we need to support you to have you successful for us.
Thank you. It's really, it's professional development, um, and getting a different type of perspective and, and than I could get right here with some of the circles, which I'm, you know, because this is a little bit newer, um, you know, I am going to different conferences and learning more traditional economic development strategies as well. I want all the tools and the toolkit that I can have, um, in order to turn that around to benefit the community, so.
Motion to approve is what you need?
Yep.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same side. Motion approved. Item seven, not item six, the resolution authorizing entry into, well, Daddy wouldn't mind if we went over this. Sorry, good. Resolution authorizing entry into a business online banking agreement from ACH, originate, origination agreement with First State Bank, Webster City, Iowa, in connection with webs, city of Webster City, Iowa checking accounts. Daddy, you wanna, you've waited all this time?
Yeah. Well, this is just changing our current checking account from a retail banking package to a business banking package. First State is, um, all of their retail customers are going to go to this new enhanced package. Since we are already a customer, the fees, uh, will not increase. Uh, the, uh, right now, like, we, we log in online. We have two individuals that are at the capability of doing that, we're gonna, we're gonna just still have two. Uh, if, if we find the need that we need more, we can address it at that time, but our auditor recommends no. I, I think he probably would've liked to have just one, but, um, I, he said two would be okay. So, the, this will have, um, a, a token, I don't know if, if, if you've ever had a, that you'll, you'll push this, the token, it'll have a number, and then you have to use, you know, that number to log in. So that number will change anytime you ever, so if you don't have a token, you're never gonna be able to get onto, um, onto our checking account. So I think it'd be enhanced security. Um, the only other, um, I, I am excited about the, the ACH, right now we use the ACH for, uh, utility billing. Those that choose to just have their, um, utility bills come directly out of their checking account, and of course, direct deposit. Uh, we're, we're working with Fuller Hall, hoping to, um, be able to do membership fees, you know, through their, what they would sign off, saying that we can take the money out of our credit card or checking account monthly. So I'm, I'm hoping that, that, uh, that will come about. Right now, my software that works isn't compatible, because his, what he needs can't go through utility billing nor payroll. So, I, I think, the only other thing is, is this bill pay, that, um, I, I'm not really exactly sure what, the, the bank said that there's, um, let's just say, I'm gonna use like our credit card, like our, our credit card's probably on a, a very popular vendor to pay for. So they're probably already in the, in their database. So, we have a couple different times throughout the month that the credit cards used pretty heavily. We have, I, I, I think May, for some reason, is a really popular month to go to conferences and, and sometimes Carol needs to pay that quickly. So I'm hoping that, that that's where this would be used, or maybe, uh, US Bank where we make our monthly, uh, electric bond payment. Something that, that's, that's just standard, that, that we do, and, and we're being reimbursed by Corn Belt for it, so, um, otherwise, I mean, we're, I don't plan to just use these to get off the sidestep, council approval for, I wouldn't do that, but. But there's some, you know, there's some instances where it might come in handy, so. I don't know. I guess I don't really know, you know, a whole lot more about it. She was unable, she said, she, right now, they're just at the stage of getting these agreements signed. And then we'll, they'll come in for training, and when, once we go into the training, she said that, you know, we'll probably know more about what, all we can expect, so.
Well, in addition to the, the benefits you talked about, it's, it should be noted that the bank's requiring an updated agreement, so we really don't have a whole lot of choice but to move forward.
Okay, yes, yes.
From a retail banking to a business banking package?
Yeah, and, and I did ask Zach to look at both, and he did, and, and he said they're fine.
Thanks, David.
Sounds good, thank you.
Call for a motion?
Still moved? Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, same side. Motion approved. Item seven is a motion setting a time, uh, date, time, place for the next time Town Hall meeting. Um, we've tentatively got April 30th, uh, at 7:00. Um, we tentatively got April thirtieth, uh, at seven PM at Middle School Commons.
That was available, so I put the request in.
I think for topics, I think we were gonna, um, Darcy Swan was gonna come back with a report on, uh, the focus group meetings they, they held on both the council as well, the other stakeholders, um, and the whole update on the rebranding process, where she's at on that. The other topic we were gonna have was, um, some of the folks from the University of Iowa, Sustainable Communities Program, were gonna be in town, and so we were gonna use that opportunity to, um, have them at the Town Hall meeting and go over some of the initial plans and where things are at, with what projects we may have in mind, and be able to give additional overview as to what exactly this, this partnership is gonna entail and look like for the next two years, so. Between the two, we're probably gonna have a pretty lengthy conversation, um, so I'm not sure if there's any additional topics council really wants to have on that, on that date.
And the date is April thirtieth?
Monday, April thirtieth.
Seven o'clock. I can't think of anything right now, but, oh, I'm sure something will come up, I would say that's a lot of time to come up with some stuff.
Well, I think one thing that we need to put on there, I mean, uh, to be very candid, was about a year ago, we had everybody there chewing on us because of the properties of town, I think there needs to be an update on that. And that might be the proper form to do that, I think. Everybody that's looking on us, cause we'll get anything done, so I think the city has gotten a lot done in the past year on that, so I think.
We've burned down a couple, we've knocked down.
Yeah, no, but I'm saying it needs to be, uh, put out to the community.
No, no, yeah.
We could probably have an update on that at the beginning of one of our council meetings, cause then it's,
at least then it's getting out on the media.
Cause it's Town Hall meeting, unless those people, particular people have turned up, it may not get out as much.
Maybe what you're, you're addressing is maybe re, re-bring up the topic and take a, uh, put your finger on the pulse of the community and see if they, they see our progress, if not relay it, and maybe get their feedback.
Not so much that, Logan, I mean, just the idea, I mean, there's been a lot happened, I mean, so we've got a new inspector within our department, and, you know, the ability to follow through and make things happen, and, uh, council has finally gotten a hold of a judge pretty good by the neck or something, you know, make things happen, I mean, you know, some of this stuff has been frustrating, you go to, uh, outside of your jurisdiction, and we're bottlenecked, and I think there's been some improvement made, I mean, on that, so I think that's something that needs to be touted. I mean, whether it's there or in front of us, but it needs to be out, because, you know.
Still, it still would be good to mention.
Both forums weren't heard.
Yeah.
Or, yeah, but I.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt if we said.
It needs to be put out, because I think, remember, that meeting was kind of justy last year.
Move to approve April thirtieth?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Um, next item is item eight, is a motion setting dates, times, and place for twenty eighteen cleanup drop-off event. We tentatively looked at eight and nine at the middle school parking lot, um, so fairly possible.
But don't skid on anything, it must be there.
Right now, school's scheduled to be done June first, providing there's no more, um, days missed.
So, so that would be, so it would tentatively look at June eighth from noon till four, and then, uh, June ninth from eight AM till two PM.
And we're thinking about keeping the model we've had for about four years now, like, the drop off, and.
Yeah.
I think it's been successful, and I think the public would still like to see a curbside deal, but I just, I don't think it would work.
Well, with the amount of, the amount of, um, we got way more last year, I don't know, we, maybe we're finally getting.
Yeah, I, I think they're catching on to their system.
And that's part of why we wanted to try and mention this a little earlier, was that maybe for those who still seem to miss the date, is that we might get it out to them.
And, and I think last year, there was still several people who thought we were doing a curbside pickup, and so there, there was some, um, entire property with lengths of, uh, just ru- rubbish and material.
I, I like the middle school, because the, the parking lot, the pull-in, pull-out, it's a great system. Uh, maybe we should start conversations with the trash man and, and scrap processors a little earlier, too, to see if we can work a, a better logistics system. I know that's always been the bottleneck, is, is having a bin, you know, and there's, it always seems to be a rush, and then we have a line backed up all the way back to like the next intersection down, and.
I think we might try and put out some, um, some, um, hats and things this year to try and break down, so we get two lanes running. Cause we've, we've got some pretty good system going on with the end there, I think, last year.
Yeah.
If we, if we brought some, some, some stuff in to make, a bit like, um, when they're doing that robbery, you know, they have the street.
The dirty inner, yeah.
Put the cans in. I call hats. I think a trash man. Which is hats, they're already being pretty roundy with this, coming on, having a guy stay late and bringing his stuff.
They just, they're off that day.
You got that right. Three of you.
What's that?
Our hats. Okay, so we, so a motion on those for that, for the, uh, eighth, for June eighth and ninth at the middle school.
I'll move to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign. Okay, item D is reports, recommendations of officers, boards, and commissions. The following items have been deemed to be non-controversial, routine actions to be approved by the council in a single motion. If a council member or a member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, it will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item one is a motion to accept February finance, uh, financial February reports, finance treasury report, bank reconciliation report, investment summary, FSB ICS savings, uh, public fund account, FSB statement, utility cash statements and receipts. Item two is a motion to accept city manager February reports, electric wastewater, water, electric year-to-date, and water to, year-to-date, and code enforcement. Item three is a motion to accept police department February report, and item four is a motion to accept the fire department's February report. How would you like to go?
I'll move to approve collectively, second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both, same sign, motion approved. Are there any council committee reports? Are there any other reports or recommendations? Okay, we're going to, uh, next section is E, to the closed session, we need the closed session to discuss purchase, sale.